Okay, welcome. My name's Tim Skagans, Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board, and I am calling this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, May 6, 2019. Does any member of the Select Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
If we open the bids for hauling and gravel, I have to recuse myself. The company I'm associated with bid on.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we are planning to do that during the roads report.
Okay.
Approval of minutes, we had two sets of minutes that were circulated for April 1st and April 15th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for April 1st as circulated?
So moved.
Moved by Art.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Let's see, Tim, Ken, Art, Tony. Okay, yeah, so we have enough to approve.
Right.
Any discussion, addition, additions or corrections to the minutes for April 1st? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining?
Sure.
Since you weren't here? No, no voting against? Okay, so the minutes for April 1st are approved by a vote of 4-0-1. And we have minutes for April 15th that were circulated.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion, additions or corrections to the minutes for April 15th? Looks like we were all there that night. All in favor of approval, say aye?
Aye.
So the minutes for April 15th are approved by a vote of 5-0-0. I have payroll warrant number 22, the amount of $20,575.48.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion on the payroll warrant? All in favor of approving payroll warrant number 22, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So that warrant is approved in the amount of $20,575.48.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Major items over $1,000. $1,600 artistic cemetery memorials. Was that cleaning?
That's, uh, yeah, that's on cleaning.
Stone cleaning. $1,500 to Gabeau Fuels. $12,000 to KAS for the garage well, it says. $10,000 to People's United Bank for payment on 510 North Street. That'd be our last one?
This is the last one.
Very good. $2,100 to Sycamore Landscaping for April cemetery mowing. $23,000 to Weaver Landscaping, says Murphy Hill Road.
That's part of this state grant. That's all we're embarrassed by the state.
And $2,500 to William Daley. Any other discussion?
Is, is that the second place that we bought on North Road?
Yes.
Okay, so the first one's all paid for.
Right.
So everything's good.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yep. All in favor of approving check warrant number 34, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So, check warrant number 34, the amount of $56,633.55 is approved, 5-0-0. Yeah, a couple of announcements. As is our annual tradition now, we will be honoring our Shasberry Volunteer Fire Department at Shasberry Elementary School Big Truck Night. That is Friday, May 17th. The festival goes from 5:30 to 7:30. We will do our honors probably around 6:30 that evening. Hope everyone can come out and help us show our appreciation to our firefighters. We will be handing out five-year milestone awards to the firefighters who have this year achieved five years of service on the fire department. Also, I'd like to point out that we have some artwork here at Shasberry, at Coal Hall, second floor now, and our newly renovated bare walls are not so bare anymore. And we want to take the opportunity to thank Tom Fells for loaning some Frank Howard art. We've got several paintings up here. Frank Howard, many of you know as a Shasberry artist, who had the fruit vegetable fruit stand turned into art museum on 7A. That was kind of a local landmark for a lot of years. And we're really happy to have some of his artwork, in particular several scenes of Shasberry itself, in the pictures here. So it, it brightens the room quite nicely. Any public comments?
Can I?
Yes.
I think another announcement. Do we know what the schedule for Mr. Weaver is? I think it would be nice if we could warn people about road closures.
Okay.
Do you know what, what he might do next week, or that, or just this week?
I can find out tomorrow. I don't really have his schedule. I'm not sure if he's going to be working on the road tomorrow. There's two left cider mill in West Mountain.
Okay.
So we can get those out.
It just, sometimes by the time, you know, you get to, all of a sudden, they're road closures and that sort of stuff, okay?
Okay. You can get it on the website.
Yeah, let me know and I'll put it up on the website.
Yeah.
Treasurers' report. Melanie Dexter, pull up a chair.
Okay, um, let's look at the cash flow for April.
April.
Uh, so if you go down to our sort of bottom line cash position, this is what I've been talking about, that we're, um, we've got a little less cash on hand than we go a tiny bit lower. Okay, that's, our cash on hand at the end of April was $227,000. A little less than it has been the last few years, so I'm keeping an eye on that, 'cause ideally I don't like it to go below 100, but it's definitely going to this year. But, so I've been squeezing out every penny I can, transferring money whenever there's anything owing the general fund, and, um, we'll be okay. But it's gonna be close. I talk about it with Dave just about every day, but, um, we'll probably get down to about $50,000 in the, in the bank account. But as I mentioned, I think at the last meeting, I'll have the paperwork all ready to go for the line of credit, so you guys can do all of the due diligence of voting for that, and then I'll have it in place so that at midnight on July 1st, I can make a draw.
Mm-hmm.
So...
So this is a, this is a timing issue? It's not representing deficit spending?
Yeah. It's, it's just, we've, we've been looking for, it's just, a bunch of things are moving, you know, it just means that, like, maybe we're a little bit behind with delinquent taxes because they're, they're based on a, on a tax year and not on a fiscal year, for example, that's something. Another thing is that in other years, we've gotten the final cash flow from the education, from the state, has been in our favor. We can't count on that because they haven't even done the calculation yet. Now, that's supposed to happen in April, and, and there's something wrong with that this year, and all of the treasurers are howling about it, but the state apparently has been encountering some technical problems with getting the information out, so we don't know that yet. That could change everything.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so it's the state's fault. I got no problem.
Well, that's just one factor. So there are a lot of factors that are sort of all moving in one direction. That's why it's happening this year and ahead of three years. It's not anything to be worried about. The budget, if you can, if you go down to the very bottom, as usual, the budget is, is perfect. We're, uh, last year, you remember that that was a freakishly small variance with the budget. It was like, what was it?
Yeah.
.01% or something?
Mm-hmm.
And we're right on track with that. It's, uh, expenditures are, we're tiny, tiny bit ahead of where they were last year, but, um, everything's really right on track.
Yeah.
And Dave's been looking at it, at the projecting to the, what's gonna happen in June, and there are no surprises coming.
Yeah, we're gonna be, we're gonna be tighter than even I'd like to be tight, but it, it's gonna be close. We're running between 1% under the budget to 1% over the budget now, depending on where things fall. We're basically gonna be on a spending freeze for the next two months. A lot of it has to do with lots of mud, which chewed up a lot of money, and pretty much we had to overhaul the fleet, and not the old things, but, you know, for instance, $18,000, we had to spend on the 2011 grader, which really is a lot of money for one piece of equipment, but if that is moving, we don't have problems. But we can manage the whole thing in, but it is gonna be, it is gonna be right on the money this year. It could be, like I said, 1% over, 1% under. There's so many variables when you get to this time of year, because you're not gonna spend every part of everything, but then one thing goes wrong, and you could be looking at something else. But right now, we're on track, and it's just tight. So I'm kind of putting the screws down on all spending.
Well, every year we borrow money in lieu of taxes. We can't do that?
Yeah, we can't do it until the new fiscal year. That's why I said I'll be doing it on July 1st.
Oh, okay.
That we can get everything.
Because we've already done it for this fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah. And then we, we pay it back in December, so...
When taxes.
Yeah. It's just, it's, it's just a weird fact that the tax year, well, the tax year's the same as the fiscal year, but the actual collections are out of sync with, with fiscal year.
Mm-hmm. Now, you said there was some school money that we haven't gotten yet, but this says we're at 105, 100% of revenues.
Well, it's not really, it's not budgeted revenue. That's the taxes that, that don't really affect our budget at all. That budget is, is the municipal budget. The, the cash that comes in for taxes is not part of our budget. But it does make, sometimes we have had this unexpected revenue come in because the, the state says, "Well, actually, we told you, we needed more money from you than we actually did need from you, so here's, here's $50,000 back." It doesn't do anything for our budget, but it does mean we've got a little bit more cash in the bank. That's what I mean when I say that the cash flow does not equal the budget.
Right, okay.
But, so that, that, as I say, that could come tomorrow, and, and all bets are off. I mean, they might need money from us if that, if that were, which happened one year, and I was freaking out, but if that's the case, we might even, in theory, run out of cash a little bit earlier. But there, there are things in place for when this happens. It's not the end of the world.
Yeah, okay.
Um, let's see, if you wanna look at the other, actually, let's look at the May cash flow, just to, I'll show you where we are. This is as of today. You can go down where we were before, and I'll show you our, so our cash position, that's just six days later, we're at 218, because that's, there's another payroll that's happened. Now, I think we're gonna have two more pay, is it two more, no, three more before?
There's three more before July 1st.
Okay, so if we are saying those are about, you know, some, somewhere between 18 and 20,000, so that's about 60 that's gonna happen.
There's four more.
Four more.
Four more.
So like 80,000.
About 80,000.
So about 80,000 of that 218 is gonna be payrolls, and so...
I'm projecting a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred in spending on that 218.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that we are getting right down to the water.
Right down to it, yep. We've got some clerk cash coming in. We always have some money from the transfer station, but that's, you know, not, not very much. So anyway, you'll keep hearing me talk about this at every meeting, but we're, we're very much on top of it, and, and there are provisions in place if, if the cash gets even tighter. The bank is prepared to do a short-term loan. It's just, it's not the same payment in, you know, the anticipating tax. It's a different kind of thing. It has not happened in my tenure, but it has happened before.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that's, that's just showing where, where it is today. And of course, tomorrow I will write all those checks that you just signed the warrant for, and then that'll go down by that amount, which was, some of those are actually reserved.
Yeah, actually, those only like 21,000 will come out of...
The general fund.
The general fund.
Yeah.
The others were, one's the Class 3 road fund, the other one's the garage reserve fund.
Right.
The two big ones.
So we write the checks out of the general fund, and then I, I send the money back over. So I'll be doing that every time you approve a warrant, I'll be sending that money back to the general fund. So if you wanna look at the reserve spreadsheet real quick, I'll just, there's not all that much interesting there, but I'll show you. Mostly water. That Lister's reappraisal, that's the, if you look down at the 290 fund, that's this money we get every year from the state as per parcel. So that's, every parcel gets $1. And then there's another one that happened, actually, in May, as you'll be seeing next time, it's another 15,000 or something. Those appear in the general fund, and then I have to transfer them over because they don't ask me where I want the money. So that's what that is.
Okay.
It's, just a little bit of garage money you can see there. Those are just dribs and dribs coming out.
Yeah. The big one we're all waiting on is 121,400 and something. That's the last Russell to close it out, which has basically been on hold for two little things to get done. But Jack won't sign the clearance, and I would write the check and tell they knew it, so we're hoping that'll entice them for 120,000 to get somebody over to finish it, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Oh, yeah, the other thing to look at is that the Coal Hall line there, 280, you can see we're, we've spent almost all of the money, but, but we've got something coming from the trustees that's going to pay for some more.
Those will pay for the, the furniture.
Yeah, I think you approved that at a meeting.
Yeah.
So, so if, if you were looking at and, and tending to get alarmed that we have so little money, that's, that's because that, that's yet to come for the trustees. I don't think I have anything else to say about this.
Okay.
Any questions about any of this?
What was that repair day like there?
Oh, it was everything from a planned service. I'd have to get it all out.
Well, I mean, just, was there any major, major repairs?
I think a lot of it was just bringing it up to speed. We had some things just not having been done. I mean, you know, our major expense items of the vehicles, which is, it's kind of odd, but, you know, it's really the grader, it's the 2012 tandem. I mean, that was $11,000 in repairs. Fuck, that's not really normal. The Dodge, our infamous Dodge, which we just made the last payment on, we've done $8,000 in repairs on this year. The grader is 18,000. Now, 3,800 of that was a major of service they did here a few weeks ago, which was overdue. But, you know, awful lot of work had to be done to that vehicle to get it up to speed, and...
Yeah, but the stuff is not gonna happen right after, I guess.
Well, no, this is the problem. You know, we, we found, it's like coming to Green Truck, which was in good, clean shape when we got it, and we needed extensive work to get it back into that shape after just one year. And that's a failure to maintain it. But we can't just, we need the fleet to move, especially in winter, so we had some expenditures, and they wasn't all on old trucks. Our, our oldest truck got a few thousand dollars worth of work.
Yeah.
You know, so it's unfortunate, and I'm hoping now that we've spent a lot this year, and we have spent a lot this year, that next year, it'll be a lot less. It's not like we have an old fleet. We have a fairly new fleet, Billy.
Yeah.
But I think the maintenance fell behind, and it, it was bigger item maintenance than would normally be done here. I mean, a lot of it we had to send out to get done.
Yeah.
It was expensive, and every time I turned around, it was like something new. In the middle of winter, you're kind of faced with...
Well, yeah, what'd you fix them things? There's...
Should, should fix, the maintain daily.
Right.
Kept clean, especially with the rust and all that.
Yeah.
These, we shouldn't be dealing with these numbers again. So, that's my theory.
Oh, it's bad.
Yeah, it is, I, it should be.
All right, thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Next up, roads report. We don't have a road foreman here.
We have a foreman that took a vacation day today.
Oh.
But he will start attending the meetings, you know, so he can answer all these tough questions from Mr. Harrington. That's me about three minus stones early on. But I'll give you a brief rundown of what's going on. Besides the daily grading, we have, the crew is doing a lot of ditching, grading. We did the cleanup from, green up day today, picking up all the bags and the part of somebody's mower that was thrown in a ditch and somebody's, the hood of somebody's snowmobile. But, you know, they've been picking that up today. We have a contractor, Weaver, who's doing four projects right now in different locations of town. We will get that on the webpage. We'll find out where it's gonna be. Especially the next one, he does a very, very good job marking out his construction. But one of the projects is gonna be right smack in the middle of the Apple Orchard on West Mountain, and that's gonna require signs way out distant before they drive in.
That's my point.
Yeah, yeah. But he's doing that, and that's all. We're actually doing probably more road work before June 30th than we have since I've been here, because we have these four projects, plus a new project that's also a grant that's the upper end of Shasberry Hollow will be done by June 30th. We're doing the mandatory onsite on Wednesday for that, and we're getting a lot of ditching done, and we'll just keep doing that. And all this is already taken care of in the budget. It's not a budgetary item we have to worry about and anything, trying to hold anything back. The second, there's lots of ditching to be done, as we all know in town, and the grader keeps moving. We should have the new roller before long, I would hope, this week. And that, of course, also is not part of the budget issue we were just talking about, because that's the reserve fund. And we'll start finding out for next year. Oh, we did, I did get to know today that we are not going to get the paving grant this year, which is understandable. They had, I think he said they had 1.6 million, 1.7 million in requests and $600,000 to give out. And we've done pretty well. Last year, we got a structures grant and a paving grant. Year before, we got a paving grant, so, you know, in their method of choosing, I think it was just kind of our turn to, to not get it. So we have plenty of other things to do for the year. We might turn our attention towards some of our breaking up aprons and fix some of those instead. We don't have a lot in the paving reserve, but we have some, and some of the aprons are in Class 3 roads, so maybe we can combine them and fix some of the aprons at least this year. We'll start looking into that. Now that we know we're not getting that grant, we'll start looking into that. That's about it for now.
Mike, my personal observation is I think Weaver stepped up to the plate and what he's done so far.
Some of this work, you know, he's, this work is, is really nice. Hey, I was impressed. Hey, he does a great job marking the road out. He's working real well with Mike. We have daily reports. We have pictures of the workers going along. It's being done just like it would be done on a state job, which is, Weaver does a lot of state jobs. The work is coming out real nice, and it's a good way for us to move forward and get a lot done while our basic maintenance crew is continuing to improve the roads. I think the combination in the long term will start turning the corner here on the roads. This is working out really nicely. So that'd be nice if we could, I mean, we're talking about the budget next year to increase the budget, because this year, all this stuff right now is all grant money.
Yes.
So, you know, we have to look at, maybe we should have our own pool to start hiring contractors to start working on these spots too. Because, you know, he's moving right along, too.
Yeah, that's, that's my point.
Yeah, he's moving right along. That's what I mean, before June 30th, we're gonna have more work than we've done in some years, you know, this type of work, so.
So, go ahead. No, don't move into the new garage until the check is signed?
Well, we, we can do, it's kind of funny. We can do stuff in there, but it's not signed over to us yet. It's still Russell's building, and it's, you know...
I didn't know that you were doing rainy day jobs. You getting to move stuff up there or...
Yeah, they, they can start doing things. It's kind, you know, we're in this gray area.
Yes, okay.
But, I mean, we've already had the first county meeting there.
Yep.
You know, so nobody objects to that. And it is under our insurance, too. I put it under our insurance. The builder's risk is coming up to renewal on the 16th, so I put it on our insurance, the whole building of the site. But if something happens, it's still Russell's problem.
Yep.
But, yeah, we, it's, I agree with, I agree, we're not gonna sign anything until the last nail goes in and, and Jack signs off on it. And then I'll be glad, I'm glad to sign this last check and close this out and move on to the next thing.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, the water main's the next thing.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. Dave, you mentioned looking forward towards the next budget, creating a pool of money to hire contractors to, to rebuild roads. Something we've been talking about for a few years on, on the Select Board here now. And I just wanted to offer that I mention that whenever somebody's talking to me about the roads. And almost universally, the answer that I, the response I get is, "What are you waiting for?" People are really fed up with, with the roads and are ready to, to see us step up and spend more to get, get them in better shape.
But it's, but they gotta understand we're gonna be taking down trees and putting ditches where they haven't been before and that sort of stuff. That's, that's gonna be the...
Yeah. We, we do get calls on nearly, it seems, everything. When we get close to anything, we start getting phone calls, you know. We got a lot of calls about taking these trees down, but the trees are, forget about being in the right way, they're right where the ditch should be. You know, they're, they're growing out of ditch. Some of them are growing out of culverts. It's like, you know...
A lot of them are dead, too.
Yeah, a lot of them are dead, too. It just needs to be done, yeah. It looks ugly when you first do it. You know, the stuff we did in the fall to do before the winter, that laid a little long, granted, but, you know, if it's done, cleaned up, we move on, the whole thing completely move on. And, and once it starts growing in like it is now, you don't even really notice what was done.
The stuff that was just done on Horton Hill, did that involve taking out trees?
Yes.
I couldn't remember, 'cause there's a new ditch there.
Yeah.
But the whole field is full of stumps, so I wasn't sure if, if that was...
I'll go have a look at that.
Yeah, I think the, the landowner must be doing some tree work there, too, at the same time.
Down in the lower part of the hill, too?
Yeah, the, the, going down...
On the right-hand side, going down the hill.
Yeah, on the west.
I think somebody's, that's private landlord right there.
Yeah, the big piles of trees have gotta be, because they're all through the land. But I couldn't remember if there were trees there where we put the new ditch.
Oh, yes, there were several large trees. They were all stumped, and then...
Okay, good.
They were stumped because they had, because that's where the ditches, where line ditches now.
Yeah.
If you're talking about all the piles of brush up, that's, that's the, Mike, Mike is doing that, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, down there, yeah, that's home.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And on Murphy Hill, we took down about 22 trees as part of that project. And property owners like Seandell, they can actually see out the driveway now, so they're, they're happy about it. Yeah, but they need to go, draw that corner up, and put two big mattresses in there to cover that spring, there's a spring in the road runs around these, turns the most. So you did a nice job there, Weaver did for the project.
Yeah, good. Anything else on the roads?
I don't think so.
All right, I think we're going to postpone on the personnel policy, 'cause we did not get that circulated, on the cell phone policy.
Yeah, we had, too many things kept coming up. I chose to push that back, so.
So, can I ask about that? Somebody called me up and said, "Why are we even talking about that?" Because you have two-way radios in the truck, and I couldn't answer that. Have you been putting two-way radios?
There's two-way radios in trucks. There's one or two that don't have it that we're gonna get after July 1st.
Okay.
Because they should all be able to communicate, and they're, they're more reliable themselves in many areas of town.
Okay.
There's really no need for anyone to be on their cell phone.
Well, okay. But we aren't quite in a position to take them away completely, then.
You know, it gets touchy, although I think you should just say no.
Well, you're not supposed to just, just to CDL.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you're operating your truck, holding the CDL, that's, you're in all kinds of different trouble.
But, but we have, we have decent coverage with the two-way radios?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of it. I'd have to check with the guys in the business, but I don't remember anybody complaining about the two-way radios. In parts in this town, no matter where you go, you can rock off, but...
Yeah, I mean, you can talk from one end of the town to the other on a, on those radios.
Yes, yeah.
They're half-way radios.
They're what?
They're... They're FM radios. It's got a lot of range on them.
So I didn't realize that when we were talking about, you know, keeping their cell phones for emergencies and stuff like that. So I don't see this as critical.
Yeah, part of the reason why there's a base station that's still stuck downstairs is we've got to figure out how to get the wire up to my office. One of the reasons it's there is so that when they're plowing and stuff, it can be on. So if somebody has a problem, I might hear it here at the base station more than somebody else plowing in another truck. You know, and there's other people who are on that frequency who would also hear someone calling for help.
Okay.
So there's a lot of value to those. Again, like every other place, though, you can be in a dead spot with them.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, that might be something that needs to be written into the policy that we didn't talk about before, is that the primary method of communication is the FM radio.
That's my point.
Yeah.
Anything else to be said about Coal Hall or the garage?
Uh, no, I think that covered it. We're just waiting for, I believe we're down to waiting for Morton to put the snow guard up. They came and started in the rain last week and decided they better get off the metal roof. So I didn't get up there today, but I'll hopefully on this beautiful sunny day, beautiful day, put snow guards in so that we can sign the paperwork and, you know. But I haven't heard from Jack when he's gonna go through with the last punch list. Like I said, the site work, punch list, we went through with MSK two weeks ago, very minor adjustments to things. So we're right at the end. It's just, the end just keeps dragging along here a little bit. Isn't that uncommon? If I had that much money on the table, I'd be pushing someone to get the last part done.
And they've got subcontractors waiting for their ten percent, too.
Yeah, I'm sitting on the last payment of a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. I would be pushing someone to finish my job. Coal Hall is, nothing's different with Coal Hall. The elevator's fixed.
Good. Didn't know it broke?
Other batteries, just the batteries were old and they have to be able to keep moving a certain number of feet before they go out and it didn't make it very far, so we got new batteries.
Okay.
Private moved three times in ten years.
Well, it worked out and I moved everything in and out of here. I had to move that one the whole time I was been here.
You broke it?
All right. Any other business?
I think we skipped the bid.
Oh, my God, yes, back to the roads. We had put out a bid for hauling. Remind me what we're hauling?
Wallingford, yeah, it is Wallingford, no, no. They have hangar kits that are very good, that we want to be able to access as needed. We wanted to have for, we wanted to have a trucking company that would be available on call for a specified amount so that we could call them to make the runs up, to get the material we want and bring it down to five twenty-six North Road. For transplants, we wanted the bid out. We solicited people to put bids in so that a wide range we could put in for. You know, there's a lot of guys who run out. Our neighbors here, they packed them. And as you can see, we received one bid.
Okay. And Art, you said you were gonna recuse on this part. I assume this bid is associated with.
Would you like me to sit over there?
Without objection, I'm fine with Art keeping his seat here, recognizing that he will not be voting on this. You sealed it well.
You said it sealed, Ben.
I mean it when I say sealed.
I'm almost there. I got this, I got this. Okay, we have, the bid is from A and K Aggreg Services LLC. We proposed a bid of seven dollars per ton to transport aggregate from Wallingford Crush Stone, Wallingford VT to Shasbury Town Garage in Shasbury. Is that the number you were looking for, Dave?
Yeah, that's about right.
Do you like that number?
Yeah, it'll work for us, it seems we need to go in great.
Okay.
It's just the average rate.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the bid from A and K Aggreg Services for Crush Stone hauling at seven dollars per ton?
So will.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Second by Tony. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? So that.
Abstaining.
That motion is accepted by a vote of four, zero, one. Thank you, yes, I skipped right over that. So we did personnel policy on cell phones. We talked about Coal Hall and Garage. We talked about any other business. All right. Reviewing action items, going back, water fountains at the park, are they in yet?
No, but we have a contractor and we have a fountain.
Wonderful.
Four hundred bucks.
Very good.
Yeah, not going expensive, but functional.
Yeah, can you fill a water bottle with it?
Right there.
Okay. We're talking Howard Park. Did we ever decide what we were gonna do about Cleveland Park? Are we gonna be able to do one there?
No, we never really discussed that because of the way the water line is. We'd have to run a water line from either, the logical one would be to the neighborhood to the north with their permission to cut into their line, well, it's not their line, before it gets to their service.
To their meter.
Yeah, and then run it down to the park, which is all getting into some money here. So, no, we haven't pursued that very far.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other things we're looking at for the parks, like building the playground at Howard, things like that that we've talked about. We have grant money to do. We just find something. Playground equipment is stunningly expensive. We're just trying, we're just going on the small end. And then we need a fence up there and other things, so. The cameras are working.
I was gonna ask you, security cameras?
Yeah, yeah, I was just looking at the OJ, yep. So they're up and running.
Good.
They're working. Soccer and base four there. Pickleball is there, so it's happening.
Have the pickleball people talked to you about nets?
Yeah, Deanie brought it up to me. He said, well, you know, we can look at it two ways. There's no way for us to secure the nets. However, if the pickleball group, which is a group of citizens from other towns besides Shasbury, want, I can find them, you can get storage boxes that would actually attach to that fence where their members would have a key to, so they can get their nets there. But they would have to pay for the box because it's a private club. Putting it on our fence is no big deal, but I think they would have to pay for the box. Because I can see that, because they were the ones who said they could bring the nets back and toys we don't have to worry about. We could easily accommodate of something to hang on the fence for them. And then they would have the keys and, you know, we can't leave them open because it just won't work.
Right, okay. Okay, and cemetery funds? I guess we need to schedule a meeting with the trustees and sit down and talk about.
Yeah, I asked, he was supposed to get back to me last week because they're due for a meeting. He hasn't gotten back to me yet, but, yeah, he's expecting you and I to attend the next meeting to talk about all these things.
Okay, yeah, let me know when it is. And let's see, on the fifteenth, we, Dave, did you notify MGH Solar of our decision not to pursue that? We did order the roller and we are working on the cell phone policy, so that one is carrying forward. And tonight, the only one I caught was putting up where we're gonna be doing construction this week on the website. Anything else?
What's the next step in the results of your survey on the internet?
Yeah, I am working with Michael Batchery at BRCRC to turn it into locations where people claim they don't have internet. Where we've gotten to so far, we've done a few initial plots of just where people said they don't have internet, but there's some inconsistency in the responses. They may not have been worded as well as they could have. But we have gone in and sort of analyzed the responses and looked at people who said they have no internet, people who've said they, it's way too slow, and people who say they're only getting internet from the satellite companies like HughesNet, which should be considered almost not having internet. Combining those and then we're gonna look at mapping those in conjunction with where we know from the public service department, where Comcast has wires and where Consolidated has wires. And I am meeting with Michael Batchery tomorrow at his office to go over how we're gonna put that together.
Okay, thank you.
And then the cell phone survey, there, I'm getting the phones back tomorrow. One of the carriers didn't record all of the places I drove to, so I'm gonna have to.
Oh, you did it also?
I did it, yeah. I did the cell phone survey. So, yeah, we were able to map, you know, every road in Shasbury, the signal strength on the road. And we've got, you know, five of the six carriers worked, but I must have overlooked one of the pre-ride checks I was supposed to do, so there's some filling in to do. But the first thing, and we've looked at those a little bit, but what really we're hoping is that first step will be that we get it folded into the state database. And then we have all the data ourselves and Michael Batchery is also helping me look at how we want to map that. And there, it's a little, little hard to figure out what we want to do. Like we talked about putting into the town plan, but it's such a volume of data, it really works best on a website where you can click the carrier you want to see at one time and go from there. But if nothing else, it will be a database that will have at least of AT&amp;T and we can see where AT&amp;T is now. And then we can watch and see if this first net, first responders network, as it gets built out, if it does provide increased coverage like it's supposed to, like it's promised, so.
Okay.
So we're working it.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, then we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
So will.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Second by Tony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.